Hey folks, as we had mentioned with school shootings starting back, you know, the all of the excitement that comes with that and making new friends and getting reacquainted with your old friends and learning things new, you know, it does create some challenges for some families during this school year. And our Paulding County Animal Shelter, they have partnered up with A Buddy's Hope. And what this is, is for the month of August and September, they are waiving the adoption fees if you will bring in some food items that will be donated. And this is stuff like mac and cheese and pudding cups, you know, cereal bars, stuff like this. And what where this is going to go is going to help the backpack program for Herschel Jones Middle School and Paulding County High School. This is going to guarantee that these students that on the weekends and the holidays, they're still going to be able to have a nutritious meal and they're not going to miss a breakfast or a lunch or whatever the case may be. So for the month of August to September at the Paulding Animal Shelter, all adoption fees are waived if you bring these food items. And we appreciate them partnering with A Buddy's Hope to do this, to help all of our students out here in Paulding County at these two schools.
I'm Todd Kennedy, I'm market president of Westar Paulding Medical Center, and we're here at Paulding Medical Center's groundbreaking. I am super excited. It's not often we get to double the size of a facility, and that's why we're here today to start. We are currently 112 beds, and we're going to double our size to 224. The first phase of this exciting build is 56 private rooms that we're going to build. It's also going to allow us to expand our cardiac and EP areas, as well as add 460 new spots for parking in a new parking deck. So we're really excited for ourselves and our community in that we'll be able to get patients in faster, serve our community faster, there'll be less wait time and more parking. So we're excited about that.
This extra parking and the extra power is going to be huge. Not only does it serve Hyrum, which is in the city limits of Hyrum, and Paulding County, it also serves Polk County, Floyd County. People come here from all over. This hospital has won, Wellstar has won several awards, so it's an award-winning medical center. It does great things. We had a town hall last week, and several people brought up the hospital, and they were really happy to hear that there's an expansion going on.
Projected, our scenario is November of 2027 will be the first phase will open, which will be that 56 beds, the expansion of cardiac and EP, as well as our parking deck, which actually the parking deck opens in just a couple of months. So we're really excited about that. And then the next phase will take another year to two years to plan and build, but it really gives us the ability to continue to expand with our community as it grows.
Motion to approve from Mr. Leggett with the amended vote on case number he mentioned.
Second.
Second for Mr. Callahan, all in favor. Motion passes five, zero, and one. All right, just to cover a few things, information for how to participate in a public hearing is found on the back table here in this room, so if anybody would like to take a look at that, you're welcome to. Otherwise, I'll cover some of the basics. Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body. All the applications before it today will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 14th at 2:00 PM. Am I correct? Just make sure that I'm right on those dates and time. Okay, so all the applications will be forwarded for consideration to that meeting by the Board of Commissioners. Anybody, any application that appears before us today will have 15 minutes total time allowed for anyone speaking on behalf. That includes the applicant. So the applicant will speak first, they utilize all that time, they're done. If they want to reserve some of that time for rebuttal, they can. If anybody else wants to speak on behalf of that application, it will come out of that bucket of time. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to an application or may have questions, comments, or concerns, also 15 minutes is allotted for that as well. If you do have a bunch of people waiting behind you to speak, I would ask you, if you make it to the lectern, to please be mindful of those people and be courteous for their time as well. Is there any announcements we need to make before we get started? All right, at this time, Mr. Robinson, if you'd introduce the first application.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Paulding County Planning Commission meeting for the month of September. This time, I would ask if you have an audible device, phone or otherwise, please turn it off or to silence so that it doesn't interrupt the proceedings. I'll wait while you do that. Property is located in Land Lot 986, District 2, Section 3. It's at the intersection of Davis Mill, or Davis Road and McClung Road. Same commission post three. It's recommended approval with a one stipulation. Advocate's present.
If the applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
And we've had no noted opposition.
Yeah, I really don't have much to add to that. I was, this permit was approved two years ago. Nothing has changed. I operate my, it's a private practice counseling office. I see about 18 people a week on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The hours are in the application. The only thing that has changed is that I actually see fewer people in person and more people online, which is actually less traffic in, on my property. So, yeah, no complaints that I'm aware of.
Well, the only stipulation recommended by staff is the one that was in existence when you had it originally approved, which is that the LUP is not transferable to another owner. It's only for the current applicant. So, no disagreement with that?
No disagreement.
Okay. Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Hearing none, you may take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on application 2025-03-LUP.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele.
Second.
Second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor?
Chair, just to clarify.
Yes, sir.
With the one stipulation listed.
So, motion to approve with the one listed stipulation from Mr. Steele. Does your second still hold?
Yep.
From Ms. Fitzgerald, all in favor. Motion passes five, zero, and one. Again, the application will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners on October 13th, 2:00 PM. Applicant needs to be present for it to be considered.
That would be October 14th.
And did I say September?
13th.
13th, 14th, 14th. I got it right once. Thank you very much, though. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, next application, 2025-07-SUP. Application by Fogged Up LLC, Keith England, requesting a special use permit on a 3.37 acre property, zone B2 Highway Business District. This would be for the operation of a tobacco, E-Cig, and smoke shop supply retailer. Property is located in Land Lot 467, District 2, Section 3. It's situated on the east side of Hyrum-Mackworth Highway and Darby's Crossing Drive. Same commission post one. It's recommended approval with two stipulations, and we have received a letter of opposition, and that is in your backup packet.
Thank you very much. If you would, please sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair.
Hi, my name's Keith England, owner of Fogged Up LLC. I'm not a new business. I was in the city of Hyrum for 10 years. The opportunity came to go to a bigger place that I could expand on. First of all, I'm not a head shop, I'm not a smoke shop. I don't carry any illicit items, any paraphernalia or anything like that. For the past 10 years, I've maintained a spotless record with no violations, no issues in the community. Over that time, we've earned the trust of customers from every corner of the county, even law enforcement from Paulding, Cobb, Fulton, Smyrna, Powder Springs, and surrounding areas. And they felt comfortable shopping with us, knowing our store is safe, professional, and well-run. My goal is to create a clean, well-run shop that enhances the shopping center and serves adults responsibly. Our hours of operation are going to be 11 to 7, Tuesday through Saturday. No late night traffic or disruption to the surrounding areas. We're going to be in line with the existing shopping center hours. This is respectful, thoughtful business designed to complement the community and serve responsible adults of a legal age. Also, all the premises will be monitored with security cameras, and I also have in place a system called Minor Decliner that scans all IDs to, and a subscription that will weed out fake IDs as well.
Thank you very, is that the extent of your comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have some pamphlets, if you want to look at it. I got pictures of the inside of the store that I currently have up, if y'all want to see them.
And you're familiar with the two recommended stipulations from the staff?
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
You're currently, you're currently operating in Hyrum, you said?
No, I was in Hyrum for 10 years. I had a, it was in a little storage place over on Poplar Springs Road.
Okay.
And I had, there was a barber shop next door, and they had a flood, and it flooded my building.
Okay.
Well, it was a big mess, and I ended up just closing it down, and I kind of moved to Rockmark for a while because I couldn't find anything in Paulding. So now, just want to move back to Paulding where all my customers are.
Okay. I mean, you're currently operating in Rockmark?
No, sir, I'm not currently operating at all right now.
Okay. How long have you been, has it been since you've been operating?
Probably about three months.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if I knew where it was before.
It was on Poplar Springs at AC South Storage.
Okay, I know where that one's at. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
These photos are in Poplar, in the storage facility?
No, no, that's the current facility I have now at 45 Darby's Crossing. It's just not complete yet, because when I had to, found out I had to have a special use permit, I just stopped doing everything.
Okay, so you were, okay, okay.
That's just the process I have, the progress I have already.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just to note that we, as Mr. Robinson indicated, we did receive some correspondence indicating opposition. Basically, the opposition seems to be mostly close proximity to... Well... It's just opposition, you know, not wanting the business to open in this area. It doesn't really, unless you read it another way, I don't see reason given other than just not wanting the business. If there are no other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant, you can take your seat.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, sir.
You don't have an area that they may sit and smoke cigarettes, right?
Oh, no, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can you expand on gift and wellness section?
I'm just going to have teas and essential oils and just small gifts.
Okay.
Cows and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for application 2025-07-SUP.
Sure.
Yeah, now, back in February, we had one similar to this, almost in the same area. And I know Jacob Wicks, our school board member, is on the Planning Commission, is not here today, but then we asked him about vape products, and he shared information per the school district regarding electronic smoking devices being the largest concern among high school students. The easy access availability for them to obtain these products were the purchase legally and then sold to students and increased criminal activity. This proposed shop is 3.8 miles from East Paulding High School. So I just wanted to offer their information since Mr. Wicks was not here to do so.
So at this time, I've opened forward to a motion to be made with regard to this application. Is there going to be a motion made?
I have all my motions denied.
I have a motion to deny from Mr. Aston. Is there a second on that motion?
Oh, second.
I have a second on the motion to deny from Mr. Leggett. All in favor of the motion to deny? And unopposed. Motion to deny passes five, zero, and one. I would advise the applicant, you can get with staff after the meeting to discuss options. Mr. Robinson?
Next time, excuse me, next application, 2025-08-SUP. Application by Donald Neal, requesting to a special use permit of 1.95 acres. The property is on B1 General Business District, and this would be for the operation of a CBD/vape shop supply retailer. Property is located in the Land Lot 357, District 1, Section 3. It's on the north side of Brownsville Road, just east of Hyrum-Douglasville Highway. Site address is 105 Brownsville Road. It's recommended approval with two stipulation, and this also received a letter of opposition. It's in your backup. An applicant is present.
For the applicant, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. Good evening, how you guys doing today? Good, how are you? Please state your name.
My name is Donald Neal.
All right, sir, if you would, just present your application.
So I've been at this location for the last five years on Brownsville Road. Typically, I'm a barber slash cosmetologist. The, I typically cut a lot of veterans. Where we come, they come, they work, we sit and talk, and things of that nature. So as of right now, with the So as of right now, with the economy being what it is, it's kind of slow as a barber shop, so the next thing would be to try to find something else that would bring in revenue and bring traction to that plaza as a whole, but not just my business. It's all—it's a plaza, so it's—I have a floral shop, a wellness center, a veterinary, and a restaurant there, which all—I have signatures from each one agreeing and have no problems with doing what I'm doing, but for the most part, I'm not trying to sell CBD oil or anything. It's mainly cigars, but I know in order to do so, I have to have a special permit to do it, so it's not for anything else other than to be able to sell cigars, and that's mainly it. As far as the opposition, I went to their house yesterday, knocked on their door to try to talk to them because they said the opposition was mainly the kids that was walking through their yards to get to wherever, but however, what the opposition stated, there is a fence behind the business where there is no way for the kids that's traveling through these yards to get through to our business or to raise any violence or any illegal anything. So mostly, the kids that was walking through the yard is coming from that subdivision. And again, like I said, I've been there for five years. I haven't had any problems with kids climbing the fence or anything of that nature. They also stated that they had a problem with the restaurant, which—that they come and dump the oil once every three months. That was also in opposition, so it wasn't just as far as me opening up, it was pretty much the business, the plaza being there, period. So again, my thing is just to pretty much be able to make it like a little networking for my clients.
Okay. Does that conclude your statement?
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? I will—there are two listed stipulations. Are you familiar with those?
I was only sent one.
Mr. Robinson, would you care to show him?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And you're agreeable to those two stipulations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Mr. Neal?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a sitting area where they can stay and smoke the cigars?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Do you have—
Filteration.
Or will you purchase an alcoholic?
I already have a filtration system in there, but mostly due to—I don't want to cause any, you know, friction with the next businesses, so the area that I would create will actually be outside. We have an outside area in the back where—the back door where I can set up something for them to sit, so the smoke won't be inside the building at all.
Do you sell alcoholic beverages?
No, ma'am.
Do you plan to purchase a license to sell it?
No, ma'am.
Any other questions?
So is this already a lounge?
Uh, no, sir, it's just—it's a shop.
Okay, so you're going to sell—you said cigars, but you're going to have other tobacco products as well, like e-cigarettes?
No, my plan is only the cigars. I just—it's only mainly cigars. It's not the e-cigarettes and stuff like that because I'm a father, and I have children in middle school, elementary school, and high school, and these kids, like you said earlier, that's one of the main things that they get in trouble for is the vapes. The vapes, so my thing is just to cater to my audience, which would be my vets that I—when I groom them, that would be all.
So you're not going to have any vaping products?
Not starting now, I don't—I don't—that's not my—that's not my target. Just mainly cigars.
But would you be willing to make out a stipulation not to have vaping products?
Yes, sir, I will be. I could, yes, sir.
So mainly, your product is to sell and go?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, pretty much. Again, I'm a barber, so you know, of course, being a barber, you're not just a barber, you're also a shrink in some way, you know what I'm saying? Because while I'm grooming you, I'm also hearing all your life problems. I'm also, you know, giving you feedback. I also know all your secrets, and you know, so it's just—and it's mainly to cater to my clients. It's—I can't say just a man's getaway because I do women here as well, but it's mostly the gentlemen that, you know, they come just to get an outlet and just to get out the house and to get away.
Any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
What's the distance between your building—
Turn your mic on. Your mic.
What's the distance between your building and the subdivision behind you, the fencing?
Well, it's a couple feet. Actually, the houses, they're not like directly behind our house because there's a fence there, so then you have a little bit of land in between. You have a house adjacent here and adjacent there, so it's pretty far off, so that's why I didn't understand how the kids were walking through their yard to get because we have a fence. So in order—if you're jumping that fence, that's the only way you're getting over there because the subdivision is directly behind the whole plaza.
But I mean, how far is your building? This area, they're going to be smoking. How far is it away from that fence?
I'd say at least 50, 50 to 75 feet from the nearest house because it's literally only one house, like it's adjacent there, and that might be almost—
No, I'm not talking about the house, I'm talking about the fence.
The fence, oh, the fence is like—I'd say like 25 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions?
So the smoking, is that going to just be restricted to indoors, or is there going to be bitches outside, or are they outside smoking too?
Yeah, I set it up to where it's comfortable, where you can sit outside, like a table or a bench.
Just out front?
Out, out, out front, back on the side, so how the—how the building is made, I can set up something out back or on the side to where it doesn't interfere with the traffic because you can literally go around the building and still drive out, or you can go—you can have two cars coming the same way and driving in and out. So the way that it's set up, wherever I set up at, there would not be interference with the traffic or stopping anything. And I also have a football field, like a field that comes with the shop also over there as well.
There is an aerial view of the property in your packet if you wanted to kind of get a visual of it.
Yeah, so it's a lot of space over there.
Can we change—the screen to that aerial that shows the units 1 through 7? And then when you see this, just let us know which one you're in, if you're in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or 7, roughly.
I'm in 1.
On the far left.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so if you see on the side—the side there, it's nothing but spaced. Over there, nothing but spaced, and the grass field is just open space, which I have permission from the owner to use.
It seems to me like you'd be better off if, you know, if you had it restricted to one area, just people just scattering all over, walking around. That looks to me like it would be a better scenario, having a designated area instead of able just to walk everywhere.
I know, I definitely agree. I can do it. I thought you were just asking, "Did I?" When I was just—when you asked the question, so I misunderstood the question, but my designated area would be in the back particularly.
What is the business that's beside you?
It's a floral shop.
Floral shop.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Hearing none, if you can take your seat. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion for application 2025-08-SUP. Yes.
Is it legal for us to put a contingency in there for no vaping since it's presented as a special use permit for vaping, for vape shop, and so on, et cetera? Is it legal for us to do that?
Since it's a special use permit, you're all permitted. Add any terms and conditions you need that are appropriate. If you wanted to go for something like cigars only, that would be within your purview to do.
Okay. The floor is open for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the two listed stipulations plus an added stipulation of cigars only.
So I have a motion for Mr. Aston to approve the application with the two listed stipulations and adding a third for cigars only.
Question to Council.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Callahan.
Excuse me, he's got a question.
And we have to wait for the second, now you can ask your question.
Question, with that motion, with three stipulations, wouldn't two and three kind of contradict each other? That one says, following state and federal and local regulations, tobacco, electronic cigarettes, and smoking supplies for store CBD, smoke shop business, and then a third to say tobacco only, why just kind of a point of changing that and not having three?
Leave it with cigars only as opposed to tobacco only?
Right, but we'd need to leave two in there. I mean, it's just—
Yeah, there's also—
That's what.
Regardless of whether you—if you look at stipulation number two, that's what you're referring to, is that correct?
Correct.
Owner, applicant agrees that all applicable federal, state, and local regs for tobacco, e-cigarette, and other smoking supplies, so you—I see what you're saying now, CBD smoke shop business should be obtained prior to business license issuance. Yeah, by adding three, you're implicitly removing the e-cigarette and the other smoking supply stores CBD and smoke—I believe the other smoking supply stores CBD and smoke shop business. I think if you're just doing cigars, that would—that would fall out by operation of the third being there.
Okay.
I amend my motion to delete those other—to amend that on number two and leave number three in.
Just a moment, do we have to have somebody to rescind their second?
I think it would be easier for the motion maker to withdraw his original motion, and then it'll be withdrawn, and then we can start from scratch.
So if you would like to make a motion to withdraw—
I make a motion to withdraw.
And it's—if the motion maker has withdrawn it, it's withdrawn.
We don't have to second that, okay.
No.
Thank you.
And so now the floor is open for an additional motion.
So if you would like to—
I make a motion to approve with stipulation one and stipulation two, removing the electronic cigarette and other smoking supply store CBD smoke shop, then adding three cigars only.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Aston. With the approval of stipulation—with approval of the application, with stipulation one intact, two amended to remove e-cigarettes and smoking supply—other smoking supply store—supplies in store CBD smoke shop, and three was—or I guess the third stipulation was to say cigars only. So—
Or we could just add it to the same.
We can run with three.
The way he's got it—in his current motion makes it very clear what's intended.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Callahan on that motion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 3, 2, and 1. Again, application will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 14th at 2:00 PM. And the applicant will need to be present for it to be considered at October 14th here. You're welcome. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, final application today. It's 2025-06Z, application by Hearts of Fire Church requesting to rezone 9.882 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to O&amp;I Office Institutional District to construct a church and private school. Property is located in Land Lot 814, District 19, Section 2. It's located on the east side of Bill Caruth Parkway, north and west side of Lula Circle. Seeing Commission Post 3, staff has recommended approval with two stipulations, and we do not have any noted opposition or concerns on this one, and the applicant is present.
If you please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Thank you. My name is Jim Castle, and I am the senior pastor at Hearts on Fire Ministries, and we have a church currently—we started originally in 2010 in Paulding County, and we moved to Powder Springs just across the Paulding County border in 2018. We're looking at purchasing this piece of property here to build our new church and also the school that my wife runs. This is my wife, Keely. If you want to say anything about the school, it's been around since 2005.
Please include her on the sign-in if you want to speak.
I assigned her in.
Thank you.
Hearts Academy started as Trinity Homeschool in Powder Springs in 2005, and since is doing business as Hearts Academy of Excellence. We have about 250 students currently, and we're in Powder Springs. So our school is a hybrid program where homeschoolers come two days a week, so we have elementary that comes on Monday and Wednesday, and middle and high school that attends on Tuesday and Thursday. Parents oversee the homework that is also found, lesson plans online. On the other days, we have athletics, football, volleyball, basketball, golf, and I'm forgetting some, but also we have fine arts that started a couple of years ago, and that program is growing. We've grown 25% in the last year, and so we need more space, and we need a gymnasium to facilitate not only the program for our students, but also for the church and the community, so.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Yeah, thank you.
There are two listed stipulations, and before we get into that, I want to clarify what I read in here, which if I go back under Section D of the staff recommendations, and I guess I will go to Assistant Director Parrish. If I'm reading this correctly regarding Lula Circle, are you asking that part of the stipulations be—that the roadway surface be improved from the entrance to the first paved road? Oh, I can.
Sorry. So part of the development regulations, when a parcel is developed adjacent to a substandard street such as surface-treated or dirt, that it has to be brought up to county standards from their entrance to the nearest county standard road. That's not a stipulation because it isn't in the development regulations, but it is noted for the applicant to understand.
Okay, just wanted to make sure because if that was supposed to be an added stipulation. I was looking at number one, which says that, you know, agrees access to the development shall be determined, but that's more positioning of the driveway off of whatever roadway.
Yes, sir.
And then sufficient right-of-way frontage along the portion, you know, that's also different from what I was reading in D.
Yes, sir.
But it did state stipulation there, so I was just wanting to clarify.
Yes, sir.
So are you familiar with the two listed stipulations?
Yes, sir.
And you're agreeable to those?
We are agreeable.
And you understand, going through plan review, there will be development regulation requirements you would have to comply with also?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
On your site plan, it just shows proposed church. What are you—what are you looking to build? Congressional—I mean, or you said gymnasium. What are you—what are you visioning? What are you, what are you visioning?
Well, we'll probably do three phases, honestly, because we want to do a full sanctuary and a school and a gymnasium. So it's probably going to be in a three-phase project. The gymnasium and the school would probably be, be first, and we would more than likely use the gymnasium as the sanctuary until we could build a, a separate sanctuary. So it, it just depends, but we're looking at like two to three phases, all depending on the amount of cash that has to come out of pocket.
And are you gonna, are you gonna move, as soon as you have something finished, if it's the gym?
Yes, sir.
Move the school entirely here?
That's correct.
Out of Powder Springs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Are you going to planning to have a cemetery, cemetery area on the property?
No, sir.
No cemetery.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Hearing none. You may take your seat. Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? On behalf of, please come around. Yes, ma'am. Hearing none. At this time, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns?
Okay, if I'm understanding correctly, and I don't know if I am or not...
If you would please, before you begin, state your name.
Oh, I'm Gail Moss. I live, I live on the other side of this property.
Okay.
We have a one-way street right this minute, so are you suggesting that you're bringing all your people down that one-way street?
Address your questions to me, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've never done this before.
I understand.
So I'm trying to figure out if they are planning on bringing from Angam Road and bringing people down Lula Circle in front of my house. And this is going to be, if it is, you're causing me not to be able to get out of my house. There's only a one-way street. I don't have any other way to get out except Lula Circle. So I'm concerned about that. I'm not against a church, and I'm not against anything about it, but I feel like there should be a different alternative there. Is there any way that we can make it the exit and entrance from Bill Caruth? Because it's a lot, a lot bigger than Lula Circle. Lula Circle, you have to pull over to the side to let somebody get by you. And while we only have four people on that road, that would inconvenience us a lot. I'm not a, I'm a very early riser. I get out of the house early, and it'll be during schooling, which and everything else. I'm concerned about that.
Okay.
And I'm also concerned if y'all are planning on widening Lula Circle and taking some of my property. Y'all already took the property in the, in the back of my house for Bill Caruth Parkway, and then you'll be taking my property in the front, too. So I'm concerned about that. And if y'all do expand that road a little circle, I've got a 40 by 40 garage right there, and if you took away, you had a right-of-way there, I won't have any room for my garage. So I'm very concerned about those things, and I'm wanting to find out if we can, if, since they're planning on building a gymnasium and everything, how is it going to help or hurt my property value of my home? And because I've been living there over 30 something years, I don't really want to move. And I don't mind them giving me a privacy fence, they could put a privacy fence up for me. I'd be thrilled with that. I'm not against the church. I'm just concerned about the things I've just mentioned. And have they done a traffic study, you know, regarding it?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns about this application? Okay, hearing none. You do have time remaining, Mr. Castle. If you would like to address any of the questions, I'm going to go ahead and bring you back around so that we can have that dialogue. We may bring in some of the comments from staff as well. Director Parrish?
Absolutely.
Okay. To, to try to address some of it, I mean, from the Planning Commission's perspective, and I'm going to talk directly to you from here about this, from the Planning Committee Commission's perspective, this is just to determine whether the proposed use of the property is appropriate in this location. It doesn't determine all of the particulars concerning roadway access, driveway permits, or anything else that may go on. That's, that's taken care of in a different process with professional engineers of the county that you see in front of you here, from community development to DOT to water. And they will look at it at a process called plan review. And that is, and they will have to comply with the development regulations, and it doesn't matter if it's a church or a store or anything, they all go through that same process, and the county professional staff applies those standards to each development. So concerning the roadway, they've addressed it somewhat, and you can take a look at the application when you get a chance, if you haven't had a chan, had an opportunity to see what the staff's recommendations are. But they are talking about bringing Lula Circle, if it is going to be involved in this process, up to, upgrading it to where it would be a road that would be able to better conduct traffic, to the nearest main roadway, which in this case would probably be Bill Caruth, and I'm sure Erica will correct me if I'm wrong. So that would be handled in a different process. This is, again, just to determine whether the proposed use is acceptable. It doesn't say what color the picket fence is going to be or anything else. Mr. Castle, just, you have time remaining that you can speak as a rebuttal. You still do so to me, not to the audience?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And of course, we can ask you questions going forward.
Yes, sir, yeah. I actually have a question. I'm wondering if, if you can make Lula Circle a one-way. From Angam Road to Bill Caruth, that would eliminate, I think, most of the issues of getting out, there would, there would be no issue getting out of, of a driveway for anybody on the road if that was made a, a, a one-way from Angam back to Bill Caruth. And as far as anyone that is getting off from Bill Caruth onto Lula Circle, that part of the road is already widened to the driveway. So just a, just a thought, I don't know if that's something that could potentially be a compromise or...
I think that would be handled in plan review in your conversations with the DOT at that, at that point. Understanding your thinking in that manner. Property values, as far as, I don't know that you can really address that, that was some of the topics that was brought up by Ms. Moss. The inconvenience had to do with mostly being inconvenienced by traffic that would then be going in front of her house when it's supposed to be a road that has minimal occupancy on the road.
Sure, totally understand.
But privacy fence, let's talk about that for a second.
Yeah.
Would that be something that you would stipulate to between the church's property and the private residence next door?
It is definitely something we would consider. If, if, I mean, I, I don't think we're going to have a building that's up close to, if, if you look at the map, the, the top part, I believe Ms. Moss, if I'm not mistaken, her land is just on the, on the, on the other side of the top part of our property. And, and so, I understand Wesley Boyles grew up with you, and his wife works for, for Hearts Academy as well. But, but as far as the privacy fence, I mean, we could do like a partial fence that, you know, would block her home view, that's a long distance across there. That would be a very expensive fence.
About 400 feet, as I see it.
But certainly, something, you know, directly behind her home that would block any view, I'm not opposed to, sir, at all. Okay, I may not. It's, it's... Ma'am? Ma'am, I'm sorry. Just, hold on just a minute.
The Ms. Moss property is adjacent to this property on the north boundary.
Okay, so immediately adjacent?
Immediately adjacent to the north.
Is that the boundary that's 420 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Gotcha. Okay. So that being one of the questions, as far as you would be willing to place a fence there for privacy purposes, blocking the view from her home?
Yes, again, just for clarification, her property is just to the north of, of the top line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's exactly where, where I thought her property was, and, you know, certainly where her house sits, I'd be more than happy to put a fence there that would block any view. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, depending on...
That entire line, though, that's, that's a pretty long distance. I, I don't know if I'd be agreeable to put a, a privacy fence along the entire line, but in, behind her house, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that, that may be a stipulation that would result from a motion made here. Just to make sure it was something that you would, you would consider and would be agreeable to. Are there any questions to the applicant from Planning Commission at this point?
Back to a question I asked you earlier. You're, you're currently only showing, now, now that Ms. Moss has spoken about adjacent property, do you have any plans in a second phase, third phase of something that is on that vacant area in front of your detention facility that would be adjacent to her? I mean, I see your gymnasium shown first, but then obviously your other vacant areas are that northern property line. I mean, if you're going to do additional stuff, that makes the most sense of where you would put it.
Yeah, I, I don't have like a phase three over adjacent to her property line that, that we've looked at or considered. Frankly, I think we considered that for a potential practice field for football, potentially, and maybe baseball, but just as a practice field, nothing, nothing formally. That's just something that we've considered.
Now, do you guys, at your current school, I went to a football game at Praise the other day. Do you guys compete?
We do, we compete with Praise.
Okay. And so do you, where do y'all have your home games currently?
Our home games right now are at Jesse Davis Park in Douglasville.
Okay.
On the new turf field that they just developed there. And our home games, we've already locked in for next year as well. So we...
But at the, at the current moment, you don't plan on having athletic fields that are...
No, no, sir.
Other than practice.
Correct.
Any other questions from Planning Commission?
What, what's your approximate height on your proposed gymnasium, gymnasium you're going to build?
I'm sorry, sir.
How high is it going to be?
How high is your gymnasium?
I don't know what the standard size is, probably, whatever the standard size. I'm not sure what the height is. They would play volleyball and basketball, whatever that, that standard size is. I apologize, sir, I don't, I don't know. That's an architect question or an engineer question, that's... Definitely not for the pastor.
So on the privacy fence, what are you exactly willing to do? You really never defined exactly what you'd be willing to do.
Sure, I'd, I would be happy to put a privacy fence behind her home that would block the view if there, if that was a concern for her.
So you're not willing to go the 423 feet?
That is quite a distance across there. Not 100% sure, but I, I don't know what the cost would be for that. Be something we could certainly consider.
Are you, would you consider making a stipulation of no lighting on practice fields that you're talking about developing there? That would, because the lighting in the future would, you know, reflect onto her property around her, her house?
Again, if that's a, if that's a concern that she has, then, you know, we could certainly discuss that. But if it's not a concern for her, then I, I don't even know why we necessarily want to bring it up, because I have no plans to put lighting on there now.
But, but...
It's almost like an afterthought.
Reason I'm asking you is five years from now, you may decide, you know, this is time to put a, a good football field there, and you'll want lighting where you play on Friday nights, and it would make a big difference to her in five years from now.
Yeah. I understand that. That's, that's a good point. I don't think that property is suitable for a football field, so I don't think that would be an issue. To put a full, a full-sized football field there, I don't think it's, I don't think it's even a potential. It's just not, the land is sloped, it's, it's, it's just not suitable for a football field.
Pastor Castle?
I'm sorry? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
What are your hours of practice?
Typically from six to eight o'clock at night, but that's what they are now because we practice at California Park. So more than likely, it would be right after school, which is from four o'clock, so it'd be more like four to six o'clock.
I have a question for Ms. Parrish for the DOT concern. Ms. Moss had a question about the, the accessibility on the street that's, that, it's not a stipulation, and I understand it goes to development regs, but would that apply from your memory of the regs from only that northeast corner back out to Bill Caruth? Or would it continue on past her house as well? Because the, the current applicant couldn't give you right-of-way anywhere but on his property. And that was one of her concerns, is, is right-of-way through hers.
Correct. So depending on the direction he is going to request his parishioners come and attend church or come to school, would really depend on which direction we look at where the entrance and the nearest paved county road is. It would be very difficult to, to knock on her door and the other neighbors along Lula Circle to say, you know, we're, we're building our church, we are required to bring this road up to county standards, therefore we need to acquire right-of-way, purchase right-of-way from you. The easiest thing for them to do would be to come from that, that parcel driveway and then come back to Bill Caruth, and then they could widen the road and everything on, you know, from, from their side of the road and not have to work with the owners across the street.
Did y'all have any conversation at all about access to Bill Caruth? Have they been told they can't? I mean, if they come back and the cost to build that exceeds the cost of an access on Bill Caruth, are we in favor of allowing access on Bill Caruth as a county or no?
I would have to, I have not pulled the deeds. I don't know when we purchased the property along the corridor, if we purchased access rights. So that is a, something we would have to research.
I mean, that may come down to this monetary, one or the other.
Right. But access rights are expensive also.
Okay.
So it's not one, it's not, it's something at that point the board would have to make a recommendation and approval on.
I mean, there is a possibility that it may not access off the, the secondary road. Possibly.
Possibly.
But that will not all be determined until we get the plan review.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a application 2025-06-Z. We have two recommended stipulations. There's thought of a third possibly. Does anybody want to make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve with the two-listed stipulation and add a third stipulation that the church put a privacy fence, six-foot wooden fence along the northern property line that's agreeable between the two parties on distance.
And so we're setting the distance as what is agreed to between...
Yeah, and that, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm, my third is, i- in my mind is six-foot wooden privacy fence up to the 400 feet. If y'all can agree that it's 200 feet, that's acceptable.
Mr. Steele, just to clarify, your motion, though, your third stipulation would be six-foot wooden privacy fence along the entirety of the property or less if agreed to by the parties?
Correct.
So we have a motion from Mr. Steele to approve the application with the two-listed stipulations, added the third with the church placing a six-foot privacy fence along the entirety of the northern property line or to a distance agreeable by the church and the neighboring property owner.
Can, can I rescind my motion for a second and ask a question of...
Can I rescind my motion for a second and ask a question of opposition?
Yes.
All right, I'll rescind, and I would like to ask Ms. Moss to step back to the podium. So just for a thought, real quick, just for a thought. As I said it, and I sit here and think about it, too. If they ever do sports, you know, a six-foot fence is only going to keep you from seeing, obviously, at the six-foot height or less. What about a planted buffer? What about trees?
It depends on what type of trees. Because I know that there's some kind that causes diseases. They'll get a disease and pass it all the way through. So I'd be okay with trees also.
Because the trees will grow a little taller. I mean, the six-foot...
I've got a lot of trees on my property, so, yeah, trees will work. And it didn't have to be all the way around my property. I just want it between mine and that portion that they're gonna be on. I don't know how long...
Your house is closer to Bill Carruth, and that is a building that's up in that, up by the other road, correct? You have a garage that's up near the front road, and then your house is down the driveway?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
It's at the front of the... And I guess I'm a little bit confused because there's a person at Onslow Land before me, and then I'm right next to it. So, and we did look at it just a few minutes ago, but I think I need to look at that. Because I'm trying to figure out. And just right there. Yeah. And so it would just be right there. Is that only...
That's the home 400.
Oh, is that 400? I didn't know how long it was. But, yeah, but we, I mean, I would be up to trees also.
Well, can I ask, I guess, a favor of you?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna continue with a motion to approve it with the two stipulations. I would like you two parties to get together and work that out privately.
Okay.
Is that acceptable, both of you?
Yeah. I didn't realize they was gonna put a stadium, though, so it kind of threw me off when y'all mentioned that.
Just be neighborly and talk to each other.
Oh, no, no, I believe in God and I believe in the church. I mean, I go to a church constantly, and I work at the church. I don't mind that. It was the privacy issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Not because I bought the property 30-something years ago, and we got there, there was nothing there, and then they came and took Bill Carruth from me. And then, all of a sudden, now we're gonna have a parking lot over there with a church and everything. So I was concerned about it.
Yeah, I think the trees may be better for you. But so I rescind my first one.
Mr. Steele, the ONI District requires a minimal 20-foot planted buffer.
Okay. So it covers it anyway.
So I will open the floor back to a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the two-listed stipulations.
Motion to approve by Mr. Steele with the two-listed stipulations.
Second?
Second from Mr. Callahan. All in favor? Motion passes. Five, zero, and one. And just as a offhand comment, I always recommend that the applicants please talk to the neighboring property owners. A lot of times, it makes things go a lot more smoothly. Again, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 14th. I got it right again. At 2:00 PM, applicant needs to be present for it to be considered. If there's any changes as far as stipulations that might be considered between now and the Board of Commissioners' consideration, please work any of that through Mr. Robinson with Community Development Office.
Are there any other announcements before we need to do the final act here?
Okay, well, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion to adjourn by Mr. Callahan. Do I have a second? From Mr. Leggett, all in favor? Motion passes, five, zero, and one. Thank you very much.